I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter.
Name the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Heavenly Father, we come today just to say thank you. Thank you for which all that you've done for us. Lord, be with us here today in making the decisions for our fair city. Lead us in guidance in all that we do so that we are doing things that are pleasing in your sight. Lord, give us the strength to do those things that are difficult, but that are right for our fair community. All these blessings, we ask in your darling son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Proctor, Ms. Kigglestall, Councilmember Brooke Marcot, here. Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard. Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Dahl.
Here.
Thank you. We have no public comment cards tonight, but at this time, I'll ask you to silence your phones, and we will move on to Agenda Item 2A.
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of February 20th, 2024, which will be published on March 6th, 2024.
I need a motion.
Motion.
So moved by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there any discussion on the minutes of our meeting from February the 20th? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, 3A.
Ordinance number 2024-02, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a maintenance and operations services agreement by and between the City of New Iberia Sewage District Number One of Iberia Parish and Statewide Electrical Services LLC.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Is there anyone to comment on this issue? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Now, we're back to the main motion.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
So I do have a question.
Sure.
Is this the same company that's been operating?
It is the same company. If you look, they go up about $1,000 a year for, you know, the duration of the contract in some, you know, phases. But it is the same company that ourselves and the parish have contracted with.
Right, I remember, I think, the first year we had a contract like this.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any problems, any issues that came up during the last three years?
I can't say that it's been perfect, but they've responded to every issue. They've handled it, they, you know, I mean, I think that they're doing a good job. Has there been some hiccups? Yeah, is that always going to be the case in our sewer systems? Yeah. But I think he's been responsive. We've met with him a couple of times that we had issues. We haven't since Craig's been, Craig's taken over, but I know when Vince was here, we had a couple of issues. And I mean, they were responsive and came in and, you know, with their hat in their hand and said, "I'll make it better," and they did.
Okay. Craig, you satisfied?
I have, I've had no issues with it.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor, how many years they've been doing it with? I mean, pretty many years. Yes. So they know the system pretty well. He does, he does. Yeah. And the Cotton Street system, we own it on half. It is very different from our plant. You know, we, many, many years ago, we made an offer at one time to take over that plant, and I'm kind of glad we didn't. I'm glad. It's, it's just different, and that shared relationship is, 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 he navigates that well, let's put it that way. Yeah. Good, thank you. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you. 3B.
Ordinance number 2024-03, an ordinance granting CenterPoint Energy Resources Corporation, doing business as CenterPoint Energy Louisiana Gas, the right to construct, install, operate, and maintain facilities for the transportation, distribution, and sale of gas in the municipality, and for such purposes to use and excavate in public highway, street, sidewalks, alleys, squares, commons, grounds, and other publicly owned areas, and levying a franchise privilege tax for that purpose.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot. Is there anyone here to discuss this item? Hearing seen none? I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Now proceed to the main motion. Remember, the only change that we made from last time, they had a four-and-a-half percent franchise fee that was just going to cost our citizens. We knocked it down at the last meeting to four percent because we didn't want, that was their choice, not, it should be our choice if we're going to tax our citizens higher. So with that, I need a motion.
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 Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Any discussion on this item?
So, I just have a question.
Sure.
And this is more from my knowledge. All of our utilities, all of our utility service providers charge the franchise fee back to our customers?
Yes, yeah, and then they blame us on the bill.
And the law allows them to do that.
And the law allows them to do that. That's exactly right.
Okay. You know, I mean, because it says gross receipts, but it really is our citizens paying this.
Yes, that's why I was, when I saw it was four-and-a-half, I was like, who, who made this go? We're not making this go up. You know, we budget, and because these franchise agreements have been around, some of them since 1926 when we sold Cleco. But, you know, so we budget every year what we're going to get from that to pay expenses, to do whatever. So it's not like you can just say, "Hey, let's cut it down to three percent." If you do something drastic, you know, it would affect our budget, but we don't need to go up because it's really, you know, our citizens are paying for that.
Okay. Now, one thing that I noticed in the contract, and I'm asking this question only because we beat Cleco up about it as far as, you know, when they cut people off and who they cut off and that kind of thing. We kind of beat Cleco up on that. It doesn't state here what their strategy is or what, you know, what their rules are as far as how, and, you know, you know, do they cut them off when it's 30 degrees or, I mean, I don't know. Do we even know what that looks like for the gas company?
No, ma'am, I don't. And I can tell you that every utility, I'm not being ugly, it's a business. They're, they're, you know, they're ruthless. I mean, all of them, we beat Cleco up, but we didn't get much out of them for any changes. Utility companies are a business, and the way they look at it unfortunately is, you know, you don't pay them to cut you off. Different utility companies seems to have more of a threshold for giving people a second chance or for extending it. They all do have some programs. I do not know exactly what they have.
Okay.
I mean, it's something we can ask. I don't know that it's, we're going to get it in the agreement, but it would be nice to know.
What are, because we're signing this agreement, and we're saying, "Oh, yeah, go ahead and do all these things." It'd be nice to know what we agreeing to allow them to do to our citizens.
Okay.
Just like we did with Cleco.
No, you're right. And I mean, we didn't get anywhere, but at least we got some education.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
I don't think we'll get to change it, but it would be nice to know and maybe, and knowing we could uncover a program or something that they, you know, give people extensions or that kind of thing.
I mean, I think we couldn't get them to budget on it, but they are trying to put some things in place to help our citizens.
Right, no, they are, they are. And, and, and I'm not going to dog CenterPoint, they might well have that in place.
Exactly, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
I have no problem finding it out.
Okay.
I need to make a note of that.
Thank you.
Mayor, I can give a little suggestion on this.
Okay.
Because we deal with gas a lot in the business I'm in. If you do smell a gas leak in your home, it's better for you to get, call the plumber instead of the gas company. Because if you call the gas company and they do have a gas leak, they turn the gas off. And then you have to call the plumber. So if you call the plumber.
You might be able to isolate that device.
The gas leak, they can fix it and you'll still have gas.
Yeah, or isolate that one thing.
Because what happens when you, the gas company, for the safety of the home.
Yeah.
Turns it off, and then you have to get the gas, test it at your home, fix everything up to date, then they come back and turn it on. So it's a little, just a little.
Okay, that's a good point.
Or no information. If you have a gas leak, you smell gas, call the plumber first, if you can get the plumber.
I was going to say, if you can get one.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
But that's, that's good information for, because we have a lot of old homes in the city. And so people need to know that's probably the process to follow.
It's the best process.
That's a good idea. Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Onto Resolutions 4A.
Resolution number 24-26, a resolution awarding contract to Glen Legge Construction LLC for the City of New Iberia Asphalt Ceiling Project, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection there with.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and I think Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. It was close. This is one, it's in the range of thirty, a little over $30,000. John, you want to come up?
So this basically, this is going to go back on our asphalt streets where we had some cracking after the drought last year. Just to go in and route those cracks out and seal them up to try to keep them from getting worse, and also help preserve the pavement long-term so we don't get any premature failures. It is a unit-priced project, but we went out and measured everything, threw a little bit of extra in there just because, you know, you're going to run into some extra stuff. But it's $31,200. To go in, we had originally set like a $50,000 budget threshold.
Right, right.
So I'm, I'm pretty confident we'll hit this pretty, pretty hard. The days, the only thing is if we run into some issues where we spend a couple of extra days.
Okay.
I think we have ample in-year footage to, to do, to do the work. And since we've got all this rain, you know, the last couple of months, we've actually had some of those cracks.
Kind of close up a little bit.
Kind of close up a little bit, which is good.
Yeah.
Let the, the soil below rehydrate. So it was the only bidder we got. Unfortunately, this is a very specialized thing. I could only find two contractors in the state that would actually do this, and one wasn't interested. They're a bigger company, it was a little bit too much, too small for them.
Okay, ask them a question?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So it says the warranty is for one year. Well, maybe this question is for you. Do our people have the ability to go behind them and do the maintenance or will we have to hire them again? Because I mean, the way climate change is going.
We haven't done any crack sealing, so we don't have, I don't think we could do that.
Okay.
The hot patch machine, I'm happy to report, is working, and it's being used every day, and we're training a couple of crews, and they are beginning to fix potholes the right way. So we can take care of that. But this crack sealing, you know, you more need a tar pot, you more need, you need some equipment we don't have.
Okay, so we would hire them again afterwards?
We would, we would. Anybody else? Yes, sir?
I saw they had, the budget's $50,000, but this is only for the asphalt streets in the city of New Iberia.
This is the ones that we reconstructed.
Our new streets.
Yes.
We had some cracking issues. It's, I don't have the, I've got which.
But that's just the new streets?
Yes, that's, that's.
You don't have the list of the streets?
Yeah, they're here.
Yeah, they're listed.
Look on page three.
But those are just streets that we did in the 12.5 million-dollar road program.
Brian Street, Constance Street, Deer Street, Everett, Fran, Glen, Mink, Napoleon Plantation, Jansen, San Jansen.
So Mayor, is there any way with the older streets who have any funding to do that? Or, because I know some of the cement streets, since we have the same problem of having cracks in that.
Yeah. I think that we could possibly address some of that in the new road program if that's what we elect to do. You know, it's a little segue, but they've kind of reconciled the books, and we really only have left from the 12.5, $114,000. That's all we have left, okay? I'm going to recommend at the next meeting that we take that and hire the engineers to get a jump on this $16 million project. And we should have that money in May and be out for bid by September, October, or something like that is kind of what we think. The sooner I start them, you see how he's reacting already. The sooner I get him started, the sooner our bid date comes. But in the future of the 16 million, we're going to make a group decision like we always do. Besides catching, nobody beat me up, besides catching all those little streets that are problems, that I could name one for each district that we didn't catch in the first time, and then we branch out and do streets from the worst to the best in each district, if everybody's willing to give up just a little bit of money, then we could run around and do some more crack sealing and that kind of thing. But it's all, we only going to have 16 mil, 16 million's a lot of money, but that's, we, we can't go back to the pot for anymore. But that is not a bad idea because we are going to need to begin to think, this is probably our last giant road pro, unless we pull another rabbit out of the hat, our last bid, and, and I'm not counting that out, but this is a huge pot of money that will take probably three years, two and a half, three years to do. So some of us will be.
Streets will take two, okay.
Yeah, well, look at, we took two years to do, almost three years to do 12.5, and now we have 16, okay? So at some point, we, this is another big hit, but we are going to have to start thinking more of maintenance because, you know, I might not be here, you know, but somebody's going to be sitting in this chair after four more years that is going to need to be thinking about maintenance because they might not be able to borrow that much money for a while, unless they can pull a rabbit out the hat, you know?
The reason I say that, when we were going down our districts to give you our streets that we thought was bad, I had some nice streets, but they had big cracks in it.
Right, right.
You know, that I thought.
And that, this will go a long way to, to, to not have to redo those streets anytime soon.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else?
So on that patch machine that we just bought?
Hmm.
Can we just submit streets that we need them to go take a look at, or?
We have a list they've started on. They're going to finish the list they've started on, but you are welcome to add streets. Councilwoman Marcot has beat you to the punch, and she's already added some more streets. No, that's the point of all of us, okay? So please do, because I don't think that's ever going to quit. Now, y'all, remember this, okay? I can't give you a timeline, when is my street going to be done? It's a kind of precarious thing. We have to go, we don't have an asphalt plant. So we have to go to either the port or to Abbeville to pick up asphalt, okay? And so if they're not running, I got no asphalt. So there's been a couple of days that no one was making asphalt. Well, we can't use the asphalt hot patch machine. The other thing, of course, is very weather. You know, if it's raining or too wet, we can't use it. But it's, I'm lining a crew up that will always be, be doing that, and I don't think we'll ever run out of streets. So feel free to add them, they just going on the list, you know? And, and we will continue to work on them.
I also need to thank Councilwoman Marcot for bringing up Bank Street because I, I watched the meeting on YouTube.
Oh, it was on the list, but thank you.
And so I do appreciate that because.
That's your start on Bank Street.
I know you passed there today, it is horrible.
It's terrible.
And.
And look, when they start crumbling, that's it. When we looked at the worst streets four years ago now, okay, almost, three and a half, what, what hasn't had any attention because of the drought, because of rain, because of flooding, and just because of normal wear and tear, they're so much worse than they were. Because some people are, are like, "Well, why didn't you fix this street?" Because three and a half years ago, it was not a candidate. It did not look that bad.
Right.
But once they start, and it starts breaking down, and moisture gets down there, and it starts affecting the base, it's just, well, y'all are seeing firsthand how quick it just turns and crumbles. Anyway.
Look.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to say, and I don't know which streets Councilwoman Marcot put on the list, but Bank Street, that area is a highly trafficked area.
Well, it's top on the li, it's, it's, we did Week Street first.
Needs to be done like yesterday.
We did Week Street, we did a couple of other ones. We practiced, we went on a few streets and had to learn how to use it, okay? We did those by public works, all right? I didn't want to be embarrassed, but our guys did really well. They're on Bank Street now. So, but, but we're just working, you know, working around the city. And I don't have them doing, what I'm doing is spreading it out like I do with everything, I'm a mayor for the whole city. So if we're on Bank Street now, we might, we, we're not staying in one area.
Okay.
It doesn't matter, if you got to ride to Abbeville to get the asphalt, going across town doesn't really matter. So I'm really trying to hit each district and ping pong them around so everybody's getting some.
All right, well, I'll submit mine because I got a few.
Yes, ma'am.
A lot of complaints.
Ma'am, why yet? Don't forget about St. Jude. St. Jude is horrible.
Oh, I know. I mean, just that one section from Robinson to Persian, that's horrible. And I re, I mean, I turned in a couple of spots that I asked them to go and fix, but everything else on St. Jude was fixed except from, from Robinson to Persian. That's the only spot that didn't get redone when we.
Just sent them in.
The road program.
That's all I can say.
Yeah, I just sent in that street.
Yeah. I mean, you know, if we had an engineer, it was working. No, I'm picking. All right, anything else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. And next meeting, I will be bringing the 114 and see if I can't get you really working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything. All right, 4B.
Resolution number 24-27, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services by and between the City of New Iberia and Planet Recession Incorporated for the District One Santiago Park Playground Equipment Project.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brooke Marcot, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. And for 4B, C and D, these are all projects that's money that was given to each councilperson for the second time to do something in their district, and we combine it with a little scrap money here and there that we might have left from a project. One's 30, one's 28, and one's 50. And those ranges are different because of, you know, where we had a pot of money for that project. So, comments on this one?
It's going to be nice once it's done, because the swing set we have there right now, it looks terrible. It just doesn't match all the new stuff that's already there. It's going to be nice, nice and vibrant.
David, you got something?
Uh, no, just, this is some quotes we received. We took three of them, and Planet Recession was the lowest bidder.
Good.
And we were able to also verify property lines just to make sure we're right on the edge.
Yeah, I had to hire a surveyor for this one because her park is so tight. I was scared we were going to be encroaching with our equipment, so we hired a surveyor and, you know, just to make sure.
But we know where the pins are in the ground, so it shouldn't be an issue. But it should, like Brooke said, it's going to look really nice and fresh, and it's all encompassing, too. So there'll be one, you know, giant playground area.
Good. And Planet Fitness, who we've worked with before.
Yes.
Remember, we have a timeline to spend this money, so.
Planet Recession.
Planet Recession, I'm sorry. Planet Fitness. It's going to work out. Thank you all. I know. They can meet our timeline?
Yes, that shouldn't be an issue.
Will you have to shut down the park while they do the work?
No, they can segregate it.
Okay.
Just put a little fence or some kind of orange barrier or something like that.
Yeah, all of that's on one side of the park. So everything else is on the other side, basically.
That's great.
Anything else?
That, that, the park has a little green space behind it like that, too, huh? This, I know this is a model.
It does, but it's not city property.
It's not city property, okay.
Yeah. Has a, a big field behind it.
Likes for the mountains, too, back there.
Oh, no, that, that's there in real life.
That would be a change of order, that would be a change of order.
That's face two, yeah.
Yeah, face two. If there's nothing else on this one, please vote your machines. Thank you all.
Damn, Brooke's machine.
Machine broke.
Are you good?
I'm good. My no one doesn't, didn't break.
Oh, you don't need that one. You just need the yes, you just need the yes.
The yes came off.
Well, it depends on the issue. 4C.
Resolution number 24-28, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services by and between the City of New Iberia and Han Enterprises Incorporated for the District Two Weston Park Fitness Equipment Project.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed. Any discussion on this one?
You don't have a picture down?
David?
Yeah, I think Lainey's.
Similarly, we took quotes on this project. This is not playground equipment, this is fitness equipment. It's kind of like adult version jungle gyms, you could, you could say. Everything is stationary, so it's not a lot of like momentum or movement components that we have to worry about wear and tear on.
It's gone again.
Where is it going to be located in the park?
We have not determined the location yet, but it doesn't have a very large footprint, maybe 20 by 20. So we would have to work with the mayor and yourself and anyone else to determine an appropriate location of the walking trails.
The opposite side would be nice, next to where them pavilions on the opposite side of where everything else at, across from the gym.
Oh, yeah.
Around where the pool used to be, yeah.
I was going to say, right where the pool used to be would be nice, because that's a big flat area.
Big open area?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's surely possible. We'll have to look, I know there is some foundation left. So we got to be careful about that, just so, because they got to drive some posts in the ground.
Right.
We'll definitely work with anyone to help determine that location.
Yeah, don't, don't go by those trees though, because it, it floods in that area. There's a lot of water gets in that area, so you don't want.
All the Cypress trees.
Yeah.
We'll figure it out, though.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Is it like just one, it's gonna be, it's not like along the path or anything, it's just, okay, there we go.
Yeah.
That's that's Bank Avenue, but it's very similar.
Hey, she's trying, she's trying.
A little smaller scale, but essentially it's like a hexagonal shaped with uh different types of pull-up bars.
Similar to what we're gonna put in on the Ann Street Park?
Ann Street's a lot smaller because of the footprint.
Okay, like if we're going small, small, smaller.
We are.
But we had to distribute between a playground and this item, um so we wanted to make sure the playground had substantial, cause it's right in the front. So this ha- the one at Ann Street's gonna be a few, like three or four different workout where these are like up to eight.
Okay.
I think Bank is up to twelve.
Okay.
So uh similar idea.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Can I get a substitute motion to buy her a new computer? No. We we're gonna have to do that.
It might be the cable.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Any other discussion on this item? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Something still works around here, great. Alright, four D.
Resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty-eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services by and between the city of New Iberia and Han Enterprises Incorporated for the District Four Bank Avenue Park Fitness Equipment Project.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter, I need a second. Second, Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed. Hey, David, tell us about it. Paint the picture for us, David.
So this is another uh workout equipment set for Bank Avenue Park. This is a twelve person versus the West End, which has an eight person workout equip, but similar in concept where it's essentially focused a bunch of different stations that allow up to twelve people to work out at one time. So it's twelve different types of workouts. Uh and it's a, you know, generally used in a lot of park areas off of walking trails, it's part of a fitness re- regiment. Um so this one, we haven't determined our location, but we will look at one uh with the councilman and the city and find a good spot that's suitable. So that's that's the objective and uh they'll probably work on these two, it's the same company is able to provide the two lowest prices on this around the same time.
Will they have um?
Yes ma'am.
How to use it, the little signs?
Yeah, I think they have uh small little plackets that describe the exercise and what core muscles you're working out at the time, so.
And some of them have to, yeah, they even have the QR code and you use your phone to to and it shows you a video on how to use it.
There's probably an accompanying app with this system too, so.
Sounds good.
Good.
Cause I want people to be able to know how to use it, you know, cause some people do it the wrong way and you don't want anybody to get hurt.
Right.
Yeah.
Safety.
Yep. Any questions, comments? Look at it quick. I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Four E.
I have I have mine. Resolution number twenty-four dash thirty, a resolution for the fiscal year twenty-two-three LCDBG Clearance Demolition Program Management.
This is our big half million dollar grant, uh which will be hitting us by the summer, we think. Anyway, uh need a motion?
Motion.
Everybody. And I hate it when it's like this.
Let's just get the money.
Deidre and Brooke?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Marka. Any comments or questions?
So yeah, so.
Yes ma'am.
Um I think we need to probably say it again, that we actually have all the houses that we're gonna uh demo with this money because people are still calling, asking to have their house put on the list.
I agree, on the flip side, we do think this is, can't promise, but we think this is gonna be a reoccurring thing. And since we're already in the program, I wouldn't say, don't take the call.
No, I do take it.
We just make a list and just turn it in and we'll just keep a list, because our plan is, of course, you know, to get this one going and then apply next year again. But yes, for this ask, this year, we are full. And as you see, it takes about a year, you know, we've been fooling with this for about a year.
About a year.
And so the people who are on the list of the new list that we form, if we're lucky enough to get the grant again, it will be about another year.
Okay, so.
Half a million's half a million, I'll wait.
And how, do you know how many houses and are structures that we're gonna be able to demolish? Cause I know it's not just houses.
I wanna say twenty-eight, thirty, somewhere around there.
Okay.
Some of them aren't houses, but it's uh.
Forgot.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanna say it was close to thirty.
Okay, alright, good.
Which is the most we've done at once.
Yeah.
Well, one time I was a fool and I tried to bring them twenty at a time, y'all remember that? That didn't work, we just pl- plugged up the system and I had read a book and thought, this guy did a thousand houses in a year, I'm gonna do the same thing. And let me tell you, yeah, I put the book up. Any other questions or comments? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you, this is good stuff. Alright, five A.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-four dash oh-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement by and between the city of New Iberia and FUSIS United Intelligence Platform for Use and Access to FUSIS Products and Services and setting for public hearing on March nineteenth, twenty-two-four.
This is the program that will operate all of our new security camera system, I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Dan Dahl and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson Reed, and we got the chief here. Good evening, chief.
Yes, um and of course, it might be a video wall that Lainey could plug up to at some point, but uh no, the FUSIS system is is something that uh we talked about at one of the meetings previously with the crime cameras of a tie-in of the intelligence basin of put pulling everything together. Um and uh kinda one-up this like we've done recently where I actually have a rep from FUSIS here to be able to answer any questions that this council would have. We actually, the mayor and I met today with the with the school systems, uh with schools all in the city, because this system is capable of bringing in our schools. And also allowing for an alert system uh within it that would tie into their camera system, let us, if if they had a uh an emergency and hit that panic button, we can actually in our crime center see what's happening around it.
That's excellent.
So this this is uh we talk, we we've been talking for a while about game changer, this this is evolving. And uh we're, the mayor and I are planning a meeting with another group next week. This is going to tie in a lot of things in our town where we can protect more and more before things happen. So but I I if it's alright, I I'll turn over to, uh yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Cause I do have some questions.
Yes ma'am, that's a good thing.
But for the FUSIP or me?
For you.
Okay, come on, Chris.
Well, maybe both of you, I don't know.
Bring your backpack, she got quick.
Oh yeah. And she and she hasn't been here for a couple of meetings, so she gonna wear you out.
No, that's not true.
Even though it is true, it's all good stuff.
Okay, so this uh system, based on what I read, it says that it can also tie into um residents' cameras?
Yes ma'am, more so, think of it as, we look towards the business community and the idea is, everybody has cameras out there, you're not gonna walk into a location, a store, anywhere without a camera. And so the government doesn't need to keep buying cameras, I mean, y'all do to start, but afterwards, we just need to start getting to use everybody else's. And so the thought is with this platform, what we do is we can reach out to the public community and pull in their cameras in a way that allows the police department to acc- access them live. And we do that through a little cord device, kinda like a cable box that hooks into theirs, but what's great is it's permission-based, so it's completely voluntary if they decide to do it, well. The idea is, I'll give you an example, Atlanta is where our company started. Atlanta's a pretty good sized city, they've got four thousand cameras in it. But what's amazing is this, this program's been going for three and a half years now, and obviously they have a lot of buy-in from large organizations like Home Depot and different ones. But they've got eighteen thousand cameras in the community that they have access to. And what makes it so amazing, it's kind of a force multiplier on where the chief said it's a game changer. It, obviously, it's a great crime prevention tool, a crime solving tool, crime crime solving tool, but a big part about it, and a lot of people don't think about it, is when you can access all those cameras throughout the community, it opens the door for Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts, and a lot of the things that we do as a day, and when I say we, I apologize, I was prior to law enforcement for thirty years, so sometimes it happens, but um what law enforcement does that eats up so much of their time, and this allows us to streamline it and do it way better, and I've always said, technology has to do two things, it's gotta make things easier and it's gotta save you money in the the either man hours, whatever it might be, and that's where this really kinda pays off, is when you start bringing in all those different assets for the the law enforcement. And then they can, you know, multiply that all throughout the county or through the city.
Okay, and so that's indoor and outdoor cameras?
Outdoor.
Yes ma'am, outdoor, and what we usually say is is we want the external cameras, and the reason being is that that's gonna be forward-facing, it's the public. There's not a big expectation expectation of privacy in the public, and internally, some places may wanna share, but they can make it conditional. Heaven forbid you have something bad like an active shooter, they're calling the police, they're alerting the act, the alert app that we talked about, or the chief did. Then it's conditional, and then those internal cameras can come on for for law enforcement when they're getting there.
Okay, um we've had, and chief, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had several occasions where uh our police officers had had to go to residents and ask them for their video on their um their ring doorbells. And so um in some cases, you know, I've had a couple of people say, I don't wanna give up my my video feed because I don't want people seeing the police come to my house and get that.
I'll tell you what, what I love about this as far as the community outreach, it opens a lot of doors that law enforcement can't go through. And the reason I say that is there's a a website that they'll have, which is gonna be forward-facing and allows people to register on there. The only people that can see are law enforcement, but they can say, hey, I live at this address, here's my email number, here's my, here's my phone number, I've got a camera facing the driveway, I've got a camera facing outside my front door. And what it does, it allows the police from their office to send out a large geofence, and that just means it grabs a big area. And it grabs all the addresses in there and it says, hey, last night between nine and ten, we had a shooting, we're looking for a red Dodge Charger, do you have any video of that? And you're exactly right, there's a ton of people in the community that love the police and would help the police, but cannot have the police standing on their front doorstep talking to them. It's just a fact of life. This allows them the opportunity to not only share that video, but also feedback with it, and so no one ever had to leave the office, and we went to talk about time-saving, um your city's pretty amazing because you're almost at full staffing. That that's unheard of in modern law enforcement, and I say that because most agencies are ten to twelve, sometimes fifteen percent understaffed. And it's so important, those man-hours are so invaluable, that if they can send that broad email and start bringing in all that video from residences, there's no telling how many days that saves them from walking to neighborhood, looking to see who has a camera, knocking on the door, hopefully catching them when they're home, hopefully catching the right person that actually has access to the camera, to the password and everything else. And like you said, it's it's invaluable in that regard, yes ma'am, it it does allow, like Ring, you can still share it, then you can send it to them, you can send Comcast.
Not hanging our people out. Well, and and what he's talking about is is there is a website and there's gonna be a website for us.
Well, I noticed that it's a portal, right?
What is the website for that Atlanta one, can?
Uh Safe Atlanta, i- if you look up connectatlanta.com and you'll be able to see an example of it, we're super creative too, it's like.
We're we're gonna have a website that's a way where you can register your cameras with us. And and on that registry is what he's talking about, is that we're not gonna knock at your door at two in the morning, we're gonna see which cameras are registered with us, and it's gonna send them an email message, or a message however they wanna be contacted, and contact them that way besides knocking at the door.
Excellent.
And that that's what he's trying to discuss, and in that Safe Safe Atlanta thing is that our platform can be built the same way.
So people will have access to the portal, the people will be able to go on there.
Yes ma'am.
Upload, can they upload the video or, I mean, are?
No, what they'll do is when when the, they won't send video unless the police, unless law enforcement requests it, and then there's a, when they get that email, it has an embedded link, and we're kinda like Switzerland. We don't sell hardware, so everybody integrates with us, and that's really why we do it. And so it doesn't matter what video system they have, Ring, Comcast, whatever, they'll they'll just drag it over, it's really easy, and drop it on that link, and then it'll show up in the law enforcement, you know, in their mailbox and their email box and say, hey, here's this video. And the the next step is businesses can also do this, but businesses can go a little bit further, and they can sign up to have those cores in their businesses to share the video. And that's where it really kinda makes it, hey, and I say that, the chief's been there, mayor, we've gone to like Rotary or different business associations and and neighborhood associations and and it's, I feel terrible because for years, law enforcement, they'd say, hey, how do we help you? And it was always the same terrible answer, it's like, well, you know, if you see something, say something, call if you can, and be careful, don't let people see you, you know, write down that. We actually have a great answer now, hey, if you're a business, would you put a core in and would you share your cameras with us, your external cameras? Because it opens the door, like we said, simple stuff like a wreck, but then you take it a step further, I give you an example, Atlanta had an Alzheimer's patient, she left her facility, it was winter, really bad weather, and so when she left, the a younger officer showed up, and this is something they'll have in their car, on their laptops. Pulled it up, saw the camera at a lo- local business where, hey, we saw where she left the facility and got on a bus, Atlanta has cameras on their buses, so they tracked her on a bus to the other side of Atlanta, about forty-five minutes away, found another camera, saw where she went into a park and they ran out of cameras then, but the thing was, in about three or four minutes, they were able to send officers to the other side of Atlanta that were over there to find her before she, I mean, passed away because it was the middle of winter. And that would've never happened otherwise, and again, it's it's just because of the accessibility of cameras, those cameras have always been there, it's just law enforcement's never been able to use them, and that's what we want for y'all.
Okay.
Anybody else, questions, comments?
Ma'am, that's way too easy. You're gonna spoil chief, he's gonna think he's got some fun.
Um well, the other thing was, can can the community uh participate, are the businesses commu- uh participate in the training, it says like you can train a bunch of users?
The best way, that's more for y'all, ma'am.
It's just for us, okay.
I mean, it's training for the chief and how they do it, um we provide, we're, we have a very robust training program to make sure everybody can use it, that it's, and again, it's it's important to be simple, so that way it works the right way. But uh as far as that goes with the community though, it it's even easier, it's about a thirty-minute phone call and installation to put the cores into a business. So it's, yes ma'am, we we wanna make sure that people, we don't want any obstacles for people to help the police.
And so, and and part of the business thing, Dan, it's a part of that, when he's talking about the core box, when they tie their camera system seen in a business, uh they can restrict what it is that that we see to keep the, whether it's a privacy part or things that they don't want during certain times, they can restrict it. They have full control over their own camera system.
Okay.
Now, if if something we see happens in that area, we would then request, can, do you have this footage, is it available to us, and and go on from there. But uh we're not, we we would never, and 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 FUSIS is not a system that says that when you do this, all of a sudden, you've given up all your rights to whatever your system is, this is, it's restrictive to the to the owners of these businesses to what they allow us to see.
Okay.
And not see.
There was a business, uh an attorney in Memphis, he had two cameras on Beale Street, which clearly the police down there want, and then he had two internal, and he was funny, he just said, look, I wanna give you the external ones twenty-four seven, that's what we usually ask for. He said, in the internal, let's make that conditional, if, he sometimes had different people in his office, he said, if heaven forbid I have a shooting, a a stabbing or something like that, then those cameras turn on, then the police can see immediately what's going on, so that's another part of it, it's permission-based, so you can set it up for how you want it.
So can you tell us a little bit about this FUSIS Alert?
Yes ma'am, that's probably, to me, one of the most important things we do. It started in Florida, there's a Alyssa's Law, which says that every school and faculty member has to have a personal alert in case of an active shooter. Y'all have the Louisiana Safe uh Schools Act, which goes into effect August first, and that's the same thing, it's requiring some type of alert for active shooter. What FUSIS Alert is, is just a simple app that goes on your phone, and so what's great is, for the school department, they can, the school system, they can give to every employee, bus drivers included. And what happens is it's just on your phone, it's really complicated, you open the app and it's a red button, you hold it, and after one to five seconds, depending on what you have it set, it does two things, it sends a nine-one-one call immediately, so local law enforcement gets that. But just as important and probably even better is it sends an alert throughout the FUSIS system, so if there's, say, a sheriff's department officer or a city uh city police right by, it lets them all know immediately, hey, here's this alert, and it's a really obnoxious noise to get their attention. But the great part about it is it pulls the five closest cameras that are on the system to it right there, so if it's a school teacher, which is more so than anything, she's out outside for recess, it's gonna pull those out, external cameras. That uh school teacher's inside, he's at cafeteria, it's gonna pull up those cameras, and it's also by the GPS of the phone itself, so you know exactly where it's at and exactly what's going on, and the nice thing is it stops an over-response too. If you saw that's because someone got hurt on the playground, okay, we don't need to send the SWAT team for that, but we do need to start EMS, EMS. But the flip side is if it is, God forbid, an active shooter, you know exactly what you've got, you know where they're at in the building, and um every second is a is a lifesaver, and I and I'm not overly dramatic when I say that, I mean, the studies have shown that over and over. And so that's what's important is with the FUSIS platform, if the schools are a part of it, say, they'll have their s- their floor plan mapped out, and when chief's officers are responding, they know exactly where to go in that school, even if they've never been there before, because they know what room it's at on the map, they look at the cameras and they see exactly what's going on as they walk through the door. They know what they're looking for, who they're looking for, and they know if there's any casualties or anything. Yes ma'am.
Alright.
To me, it's one of the most important functions FUSIS does.
Yeah, it seemed like it was really kinda cool. So, another question, sorry.
Oh, you're fine, ma'am.
Uh the the FUSIS Core, you have Core Lite, Core Lite Extended, what are those, cause I didn't see what they provide.
Think of the Core, I say like an old-school cable box for most of us, cause it's about that big, there's different sizes just based upon how many cameras, like there's a Core Lite for like a mom and pop gas station, that's got four cameras and then the Core Lite comes in, it just pulls those four, it records, it keeps it for a couple of days. You know, just for an act, if something happens on a Friday, the police can still look at it on Monday. And it goes all the way up to larger cores for up to a hundred and eighty cameras, and there's some cores that have some AI functionality to it, and there there's different sizes, so it's based upon what the needs of the business are.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
And Todd and I will be targeting different businesses, and we're gonna do some more meetings like we did today, today was our first one with a lot of schools. Uh we also had a few other people in the room that, you know, the sheriff was there, we had uh, I'll just tell you, I had the mayor of Genret, of Delcum, and of Laurville there, just so that they could kinda see this, um and so we're looking at every angle we can to get the system as big as, I mean, it's not even on yet, we haven't even put the cameras up yet. But our goal is, over the next few months, to really try to grow the system um and offer those businesses, you know, those cores, or offer uh, you know, our residents of where they can register, uh just to get this as big as we can, as quick as we can, because there there's no downside to it, I mean, you know. Um if you think about our nuisance crimes of the tire dumping and the trash dumping, and which which cost us, you know, hundred, hundred fifty thousand a year. Uh if you think of, you know, of course, all of our major crimes, but I mean, this is gonna be a game littering, I mean, there's almost nothing that if you don't have a video of, our problem now is it's, you know, I can't prove it, well, very quickly with all these cameras, that the proof won't be the problem. Um so I think the more we get this out, we're spending the money, you know, if you total up everything, we we know that we're spending, if you figure the lights are associated with this, you figure this system, the FUSIS system, the video wall, you know, you look at everything, we're we're making a huge investment. So I just wanna make sure, as as I'm sure all of you do, that we just get every benefit we can out of it.
So are we gonna pass the costs on to the business owner or are we paying for these?
The business owner would buy a core, and let's say it's the mom and pop gas station, it's a couple hundred dollars.
Right.
And then they pay uh.
The the small core, which is does four cameras, which most most smaller b- business are gonna be fine with, is two hundred dollars upfront cost and it's a hundred fifty a year.
Yeah, so they will pay for that.
And it gives them, if they didn't have a VMS, by that I mean a video management system, it gives them a platform to do that, so.
But we expect them, our citizens that register, there's no cost to register. So those will be, you know, just added benefit for all of us, but as far as for the businesses, you know, they will pay for that.
Okay, so.
But it's very cheap, and I mean, what it adds to the neighborhood, to their quality of life, to to their safety, I mean, you're not gonna you're not gonna get that in the other kinda way for, you know, a couple hundred dollars.
You know, he 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 made a good analogy earlier today, and he maybe wanna talk about the the place that didn't have an alarm system.
Yeah.
There's a school system, yeah, school system in Louisiana, I will not mention this time, but um they didn't have alarms, by that I mean burglar alarms, and so they were coming on FUSIS and and they actually um really got a little bit more robust, their cameras are older, maybe ten years old or so. But the great thing is it doesn't matter, we integrate any kinda camera sets, and they were at the minimum resolutions, about ten eighty PC have the best success. And because they didn't have an alarm system, one of the reverse functions we have is a sentry, where you can set it up so it says, hey, like between the hours of ten and five in the morning, if anybody comes in the areas, in the areas wherever those cameras are pointed, you know, be it a car, a person, whatever you want, it'll send an alert to local law enforcement, let them know. And it's not just an alert of, hey, there's somebody here, it's a picture of the camera, and it's it's live video of, hey, here's where they are, here's where they're at exactly right now, if they're moving. And so that was their way of of adding an alarm system without it, and we also incorporate alarms and do different things, but um there's a a lot of creativity, I'll just say that you can use um Memphis as one, their downtown commission is uh has bought several cores for for the local area, and one of the things they were looking at, which was pretty cool, was an AI functionality, so that in the winter, they could see when people started laying down to sleep, and then turn around and send response teams to get them into shelters. And so just, there's a, we're kinda limited by ourselves with the AI part, but there's a lot of great functionality that's, you know, crime solving, don't get me wrong, and and life saving, but just stuff for, see, like we do, we have a whole section that does for illegal dumping, so that way when someone's, when it's.
Which is awesome.
Yeah, and you see, well, river river waterways, when you have people going and dumping on there, it's, so it's really just, if you've got a camera, and our big thing is we take dumb cameras and make them smart, is what we always say, so it can be a regular old Amazon camera you bought, you know, four of them for two hundred bucks. As long as it's got that resolution, we put a core on there, then we can start doing that neat stuff with it, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, it could save them money, like when I renew my insurance, if I have cameras, my insurance is less.
Yes, sir.
So that could maybe help them with their premium with the insurance going down.
It it also, it it does impact response times and other things, not in a bad way, I'm just saying it's it's good if you know where you're going, you know. And the nice part is uh when people, most often not, when people commit a crime, they tend to leave. Some, at least they're really dumb, but when they do, that's one of the things that's so important is, nine times out of ten, while they're leaving is when the police are coming. So it's important that if, once the crime happens, chief's real-time crime center, even his officers in the field, can look and say, okay, here's my suspect vehicle, I see it. They can send a picture of each other, when they're driving, now they know, okay, oh, that just passed me, let me turn back around. And that's one of the things, when we talk about being proactive, things are gonna happen, but if we can stay on top of it and catch them immediately, that's the biggest deterrent.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Well, I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Five B.
Ordinance number twenty-two four dash, ordinance number twenty-two four dash oh six, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a service agreement binding between the City of New Iberia and I-Works Systems Incorporated for the use of I-Works applications and services and setting for public hearing on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
This is a new program we're going to buy that is going to replace, if you remember years ago, we were hacked by the Russians. We never got our system back up and running like it should. This is, communicates between all the complaints or requests or nuisance items that y'all turn in. They go to my office, go to Public Works, sometimes go to Sewer, go to Compliance for sure, upstairs, permit office. We've got to have a way to link all this together and track it. And what we're doing now is very remedial because our, our homemade system that someone wrote when they worked here, you know, ha- has been damaged. So this is, we've been researching this for a good while and this is a, uh, I think the best alternative. We've already shown it to all the department heads. They all like it. And then I cut a deal. It's about, uh, forty thousand a year. It's twenty-seven now, and then the forty starts every year in new budget. So they gave us a little break so we could kind of squeeze it in now. Uh, but that's what it's about. So, uh, I need a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Marlon Lewis and Councilwoman Brooke Markott. So now, any discussion?
Yes, so, oh, go ahead.
Yes, you were right.
This is something we can log into and track any work orders we turn in or no?
You can request, it's more for the city. So you can request from Amber and she'll be able to look it up and tell you. But this is more internal between my departments.
Okay, gotcha.
But it's going to track it to where she'll have a better handle on it when you call and can, can, you know, backtrack and figure it out for you and get you
Okay.
an update.
Okay. I just was wondering if we could, like, lessen her load a little bit by not,
This is more internal.
Okay, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So, well, I think I know the answer to my question, but, um, I was going to ask, are we going to implement the customer porter? Cause there's a customer porter where people could literally log on and type in their own requests instead of coming to us.
We're going to start with this and our system. But I'm not saying no. In other words, if it, let, let, let my people get a, it's going to take them a little while to get a handle on it, okay? I have no problem doing that later because it skips a sta- it gets it faster.
Right.
And, you know.
I mean, they literally can log in, see what the status is on their tickets. They don't have to call us and ask us where it is, what their permit or all of those things.
Over time, I'm not saying no. I, I don't want to overpromise. Let's make sure. I love everybody. It's all good people. Let's make sure that we get the system, my employees are trained, they use it efficiently, and then go from there. Cause if they struggle, then, you know, let's just wait and see. But I'm not saying no. It, I did see the feature and I think it would, you know, other communities have that.
Exactly.
Uh, so, uh, let's say we're working up toward that, but one step at a time.
I, I think, just from my experience, ninety days is enough for them to get used to it and then we can implement this.
Yeah.
I mean, this was, this is a game changer. I mean, this makes our jobs so much easier.
It really will.
And it makes the community, I mean, it gives the community information that they're looking for.
And then when you want an update, it's going to be very easy to, to get an update, you know? No, it's, that's why we're doing it. And we searched for a while to find a program that we thought fit the bill. Uh, but like I said, over time, yes, ma'am. One step at a time though, you know?
Alright.
Baby steps.
Baby steps.
No, I mean, you, okay, that's, this is kind of like my wheelhouse. It won't take that long.
Well.
Okay.
Let's compare notes later.
Mayor, would this do anything to enhance anything that Vince is doing for us? Save him time?
Uh, not really. I've, I've, I tried to pay Vince to fix our old system and that didn't work. But no, he really won't fool with that too much. He'll have to, you know, might maintain something for us. But, uh, no, this is just, you know, it's, it's very basic. Uh, uh, citizen complaints, or we generate a complaint, or I generate a complaint, or one of my staff sees something. You know, when you can just link it all together, and really the nuisance things are the worst, and they're the hardest to track.
Even have like part, part of it, you can do like permits, all of that stuff. All of it's going to be,
Now, some of it, you know, I'm not sure how quick the, my, my main focus is to get the nuisances, the potholes, the tire dumping, the demo houses, the, uh, grass cutting, the grass clippings in the road, which we gotta remind people to stop doing that. Uh, but all of those things, we're going to track all of that first. There are modules we can add over time. But my main thing is I gotta get a better system because what we're doing is very rudimentary right now. Just to, you know, keep the ball moving.
So the, I understand. I'm just messing with you.
I can take it.
I'm sure you missed me for two meetings.
I did, man. Two meetings. I was like, oh, man, what's going on?
I had to come back and harass you guys. Um, so one thing, the only thing I saw about the contract, um, mayor, is that it's, um, for three years. And there is, there's no termination for non-performance within a three-year period. I mean, we literally would have to pay for three years and then, uh, we could terminate after that.
Right.
So that's the only other thing that I would be cau- I would caution you about.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Because what is the system down more than is up?
Yeah.
You know, so we just need to make sure that we, we look at uptime performance.
Okay. That makes sense. Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five C.
Introduction of ordinance number twenty-two four dash oh seven, an ordinance declaring certain New Iberia Police Department vehicles as surplus and further authorizing the sa- the sale of same to civilians and other law enforcement agencies at a cost not less than twelve thousand dollars and twenty thousand dollars in accordance with state law and setting for public hearing on April second, twenty-twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Deidre Johnson-Reed. These are three patrol units and then some Fusions, uh, and an Equinox. Yeah, yeah. And so we're looking at our options. We have talked to LMA because you know, this is all bought with public money. I can't put a sign on them in front of the city hall. We'd get more money if I could, but we can't do that, okay? I already tried that one. So, can't be done. So the three patrol cars will probably, just as we've done before, probably will just go to another police agency. Because those we can sell between police agencies. The ten, the Fusions and the Equinox, we have to bid them in some kind of fashion, but we're looking at our options. I mean, I want to make sure we get the most money we can get. Uh, it's not like with all this technology and all these things happening, the PD could, could use the funds. So I want to make sure that we don't short sell. That's why I put a minimum of twelve thousand and twenty thousand. So we're going to be looking at our options. If there's, if there's anything else we can do besides letting, uh, L-Mats auction them and going with the three units just to another police department. So we are looking at a couple of options.
Okay, cause, um, are these units going to be brought to Baton Rouge? Cause I mean, I've been to that place where they do the selling of police cars and stuff. They're going to be here. Uh, so people could literally, I, I, I'm just trying to figure out how do we make sure,
I mean, if citizens can't come here and bid on them.
But they can go on the,
Depending on, depending on what we do. I mean, L-Mats will put them on an auction site and then they can bid there.
Exactly.
Correct.
Right.
But they could come look at them here. But we not bringing them and they, they kind of more wholesale them there. I find that when they go to Baton Rouge,
That's a mess that place.
It's, yeah, I don't want to do it like that. We haven't in the past and we've been successful. Um, but again, we are looking at if there are any other options.
But citizens can buy them as long as they go through the auction site.
Whatever, auction site, uh, not the three police units. The three police units will go to police departments. The other ones, I, I don't see why not. We just have to figure out what the mechanism is going to be where we can get the most money.
Okay. We just like to announce it to the people just so that maybe we can sell it locally.
Once we know where we're going, then we'll be able to say, hey, you know, here's where you can go bid on it.
Okay.
Anybody else? No? Then please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Alright, five D.
Introduction of special ordinance number twenty-two three, twenty-two four seventeen. An ordinance amending the budget to reflect collection and a, collection and apportionment of registration and sponsorship for mid-sized cities mayor's conference and setting for public hearing on March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
This is our conference in May. We belong to the Midsize City Organization. It's going to bring about twenty-five or thirty mayors. We, uh, they give us donations. The ba- the way it works, we've gotten sponsorships. So we will use what we need because it's not, uh, we have a, in our budget, some, some money allocated. But the way we're working it, and, and it's actually really cool. You know, the city of Gretna handed me a check at LMA last week for fourteen thousand dollars.
Wow.
That was the money they had left from theirs. Uh, two other communities put in a little bit of money as well. And then we've received about eighteen thousand dollars in donations of sponsors.
Okay.
So we'll put this on. It's, it's a neat little thing where I'm amongst the other mayors that are our peers. It's about thirty cities. We've just spent a few days together. Y'all are going to be invited to come. All the rest of them bring, you know, a mayor and a guest. Uh, I had to limit it because then we would run out of money. But in every community that I've done this, the council, you know, is invited and it's, uh, some dinners and some workshops and some roundtable discussion and some speakers. And it'll all be kind of based out of the Slimen. Um, but we just needed to do our bookkeeping so that, uh, you know, we're, as we need to do, we're kind of lining up all the transportation, lining up all of the, uh, event speakers, the meals, those kind of things. So that's what it's about. So I would need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Deidre Johnson-Reed and Councilman Marlon Lewis. Any discussion? And I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. I'm clerk, six A.
Kevin Zaring to present budget to actual report for November first, twenty-twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty-three.
Evening, everyone. I know this is a part of the meeting y'all have all been looking forward to.
Always.
So, this report is, this is through, the one you have is through January, correct?
No, December.
December thirty-first.
December, my apologies. Alright. So this report is through December, which is two months. Would, would put us at seventeen percent. General fund, budget of revenue is thirty-one point seven million. We're at three point seven million, putting us at eleven point fifty-two percent of budget. Expenses, thirty-six point one million. We're at four point seven million, putting us at thirteen point oh seven percent of the budget.
So what's going on, and since you have, you know, the foresight of January already, is the police department's budget getting more in balance? Cause their revenue is a little lower and their expenses are fairly high.
The reason why their revenue is low is because I had not done a budget to transfer. Majority of the police's revenue is to transfer the funds from the general fund, the sales tax, and the second sales tax.
Okay.
I'm doing that more on a quarterly basis versus monthly.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Nineteen sixty sales tax, budget of revenue is ten point five million. We're at one point seven million, putting us at sixteen point one-two. Expenses fifteen point four million. We're at eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine on disbursements. This all goes according to what I had said. I have not been transferring the money out to the different departments.
Okay.
At six percent. Pepperplex, eight hundred thousand, revenue, actuals, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, putting us at seventeen point two-six percent. Expenses, four point seven. Um, I've only distributed out six hundred and eleven and, or actually spent. And that would be the, um, management fees, collection fees from the school board. Police and Fire Department, Public Safety, revenue of four point two. Actuals is six sixty-seven, six hundred and sixty-seven thousand, putting us at fifteen point eight-four percent. Distributions, I have not done. The fourteen, Highway fourteen TIF, three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Actuals is fifty-one thousand, putting us at fourteen point four percent. I'm going to skip the distribution. Spanish Trail TIF, revenue is thirty-one thousand. We're at five thousand, putting us at sixteen point two-eight percent. Parks and Recreation, revenue is two million. We're at six hundred and twenty-one thousand, putting them at twenty-nine point thirty-nine percent of their revenue. And that's because we have recognized the, um, our accrued, the ad valorem tax versus accruing one twelfth every month. Expenses, one point nine million. We have three hundred and forty thousand, leaving us at eighteen point fifteen percent of our budget. Pepperplex, expenses, three point eight million. They had spent, I mean, revenue, they had sixty, is it because I had not distributed the, um, sales tax from the EDD to them as of yet? The expenses, three point nine million. Actual is three hundred thousand, putting them at seven point seven-six percent of their budget. Public Works, revenue is three million, three point two million. Actuals is seven oh nine. It's high same as the, um, Parks and Recreation, ad valorem tax that we are accruing. Expenses, three point seven million. Actuals, five hundred and five thousand, putting them at thirteen point eight-two percent. Garbage, four point two million. Revenue is six hundred and seventy. Putting it at fifteen point seven-nine. Expenses, four million, three hundred and seventeen. Uh, actual is three fifty-four. Um, that appears to me we had, um, I had noticed it earlier. That's, uh, probably because we had not reported the, um, garbage expense at that time. I have later reports and it is on track, the revenue and the expenses.
Okay.
Section eight vouchers, one point six million. Actuals is three hundred and fourteen thousand, putting it at nineteen point eight-four percent. Expenses of one point six. Actual is three hundred and five thousand, putting us at nineteen point two-five percent. Uh, wastewater revenue is thirteen point eight. Actual is nine forty-three, putting it at six point eight-four. I have, in the past, I would pull out the, um, grant funds that we're expecting, bond funds. I have not done that. I did that on a quarterly basis this year, so you'll see it in future reports. Their expenses are nineteen point nine million. Actual is seven hundred and ninety-eight, putting it at four million. And that's because of the way the, um, the use of the bonds, we were, we're not doing one twelfth each month. These are projects that when we can start and we get them done, so it's not going to be. And I have not adjusted those numbers, so that would be reflected in the quarterly. You have any questions?
Questions, comments? Thank you. Alright, Councilman's remarks. I will start on, I don't know where I started last time, so it doesn't really matter. Uh, Councilman Dan Dog.
Well, um, it was real nice. Last week, we, um, had the ribbon cutting for the Board of Girls Club. And it came out very nice and I want to shout out to the, um, people that donate to that organization. It's unbelievable. They don't ask for much. They don't say much, but they give a bunch of money. And it's just a great program. People don't understand unless you go there and see what they do. And we do have a second location over there on Center Street still. But it's a great thing for the community. And as, uh, the mayor mentioned, we have a lot of clovers because we're not sure if we're in winter time, springtime. We don't know what's going on right now with the weather, is do not put them in the street. Matter of fact, somebody was cutting the grass and, um, I pulled and it was shooting everything in the street. It was a contractor. And would you have an ordinance where you cannot bring the grass in the street? I say, dude, you know, and I said, dude. I say, you know, you don't should be throwing this in the street. We have an ordinance against it. He said, oh, I'm, I'm going to take care of that. I'm sure he didn't, but he did too. Do not put the grass in the street because it does go and get in the sewer and affects people all down the street. So thank you.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night at the Slimen Theater at six o'clock, we're going to have the Women in Business, um, seminar. And so we're asking all women entrepreneurs or women who have a side hustle or have an idea for a business to please come out and listen to the speakers and learn about the microloans program. Um, what we found is that capital is usually the thing that prevents women from going into business or growing their business. And this is an opportunity for them to learn how they can use microloans in order to build more capital for their business. Um, also on Friday, um, at ten o'clock in the morning at the West End Park, we're going to have another mobile market. And we'll have some vendors out there. So we're inviting everybody to come out, buy some more fresh vegetables and some, you know, fresh fruit. They'll even have meat and dairy.
They'll even have meat and dairy, uh, beans, so please come out. Um, if you have EBT, they take EBT. So come out and take advantage of these low prices. Um, they're a lot cheaper than compared to what we're paying for in the stores. So, uh, please do that. And something, I don't normally do this, but this is such a tragic thing. I just want to send condolences to my family. Um, we lost my cousin on Saturday, coming back from Beaumont, Texas. Uh, her and her husband were hit by a drunk driver and she was killed instantly and her husband's in critical condition. And so, um, she's forty-five years old, she's got, I think, five kids. Uh, so it's a tragedy, um, and, and it's just a horrible thing. And I, I just want to send out condolences to her, her mom and her sisters and the rest of the family because it was really a big shock. Thank you.
I just want to thank everybody, um, who, who came out to the, um, Black History Tea we had. And, um, congratulations again to the recipients of those awards that we gave out. Um, I think everybody had a great time. Um, and hopefully next year, same people or more people will come out and, and join us at the Sliman again for our Black History Tea. Thank you.
Yeah, mayor, some information for the community. Uh, I'll start with the, um, and this is gonna be the same date as, um, Councilwoman Reed, um, program for the Women Business. There's gonna be a, um, job fair in the Western Park. It's gonna be earlier that day, uh, March the sixth, it's in the Western Park. Uh, not, not conflicting with the business, uh, the Women's Business, uh, seminar, not conflicting at all. Uh, this is sponsored by SLCC. Uh, the job fair starts at ten o'clock and, uh, it ends at two. Uh, also, um, another one is, um, on Saturday, there's a, um, let me, let me pull it up right quick, there's a, um.
Health fair.
Health fair, thank you. Um, sponsored by the Ladies in Red, I like to call them the Ladies in Red. Um, the Delta Sigma, uh, Theta Sorority, they do a lot, they do a lot in the community. Uh, they turned out at our church this Sunday and, uh, just came worship with us, but they actually do a lot. Voter registrations and so many other initiatives. This is gonna be Saturday from ten to one in the Western Park. It's a free health examination, they're gonna have free giveaways and heart and, heart and health fitness, uh, awareness. Uh, this is also in conjunction with the City of New Iberia. Mayor, I always want to thank you, uh, for partnering with those organizations and allowing them to get the space so that we can, um, you know, bring these services to the community. Uh, and I'm gonna make a plea to the community. The job fair is put on by SLCC in partnership with the city. Delta's in partnership with the city. We, we do these things and we want to bring awareness to certain, uh, areas in our community that needs attention. And we just ask that the community take heed to it, come out and, and support these events because these people put a lot of time and effort into these events, you know, to, you know, we always say, oh, they don't have nothing to do in the community. And these people volunteer their time, their treasure and their talents to bring something to you. So, you know, if you know somebody that needs a job or wants to, uh, find out more about different employment, Health Fair on Wednesday, March the sixth, from ten to one, I'm sorry, a job fair. And then on Saturday, uh, Health Fair, Western Park, you know? Uh, mayor, I always, I also want to say, let it better touched on it. Uh, we had a great, uh, time during Black History Month. Mayor, I want to thank you for always showing up as best you can. I know you're not able to make everything, uh, you know, and, you know, I tell people all the time, uh, we can pretend to care, but we can't pretend to show up. So we thank you for showing up, mayor.
I steal that all the time.
Uh, we thank you for showing up, um.
My pleasure.
Also, there's an election this, well, there's an election this month, March the twenty-third. It's a primary, uh, election, uh, Democrats vote for Democrats, Republicans vote for Republicans, uh, uh. Early voting starts this weekend, uh, on a night, it, it starts on a night, right?
I think so.
Or it starts this week?
I think it starts.
Or it's just one day? Early voting is one day?
No, I think it's more than one day.
It gotta be more than one day, huh?
Yeah.
Does it, it ends on the night, right? Or?
It probably starts on the night.
I think it starts on the night.
It starts on the night and it may go through the following week, early vote.
Nine through the sixteenth.
Thank you, lady. Early voting is the ninth through the sixteenth and it's for the, uh, primary election on March the twenty-third.
On the night.
Uh, yours truly is on the ballot. Uh, represent the Democratic State Central Committee, District ninety-six B. Uh, I've been doing that now for, uh, the last twelve years. Uh, been very instrumental in my development. Also been able to make some contacts on a state level to, uh, bring resources to our community, through our state representative, Marcus Bryant. I am on the ballot, uh, number thirteen. Uh, again, early voting starts on the ninth and the, and the, the election is on the twenty-third. Uh, thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to, uh, give those, uh, that information.
Thank you. Yes ma'am.
Okay, I just want to share with all of you guys, um, since, you know, we were instrumental in redoing the Pepperplex. The Evangelum Little League numbers skyrocketed this year. So we are keeping our kids, now are bringing them back to New Iberia to play baseball, softball and T-ball. Uh, with that being said, I think we still need a T-ball coach, if anybody's interested in coaching T-ball. Um, I have a softball team that I have to coach, so that's gonna be interesting for me. But, uh, I just want to let y'all know that it's a good thing that we are keeping these kids here. They have over three hundred kids that registered for this baseball season. So it's gonna be a big season. I'm looking forward to building on that and, um, hopefully Freeman's food is ready.
Here, can I say one more?
You sure can.
I'm sorry, um, you know, um, Councilman Lewis made me remind, reminded me that I need to do this. The, um, Women in Business is being sponsored also by the City of New Iberia. As a matter of fact, the mayor has generously offered to provide one business owner a five hundred dollar grant. So if you come, you're gonna get a ticket and, um, you have a chance to win five hundred dollars to use in your business. Thank you.
Yes, and to tell you about that, um, that is part of the ARPA money that we have. We actually have some money that we have set aside to try to help small disadvantaged businesses. So we haven't done that program yet. Remember, we have till twenty-six to implement all of this. With, but, uh, it's, it's pretty well time to kind of start doing some, some more new things. But anyway, when, uh, we talked about it, uh, Councilman Reed brought the issue and I said, well, let's just take a little bit and, and kind of wet the beak of what's coming. But that is a program that I think I'm ready to say, let's get together and figure out how we can launch that. We have some money for, uh, maybe small business loan. We haven't decided yet. We have another pot of money that would be for, uh, besides that business development. We have money for one block at a time that, uh, we kind of said we would launch this year, probably start this summer. That could do some home renovations and try to partner with some other agencies to make that go even further. Um, but, but we have, we have some mun, some money for some community organizations, some neighborhood, uh, organizations. There's three that have been recognized, so I'm really ready to say, let's, let's get that going too, uh, over this year. Um, we'll save some things for next year. And it's kind of, we're gonna have to make a decision and I'll probably be bringing that pretty soon of saying, this is what's left that we haven't started, so that as a group, I mean, I, I didn't do any of this in a vacuum. It's been with all of you, so that we could kind of look at scheduling, you know, how we want to start doing this. Um, because I want to make sure we're done by twenty-six and I don't want to give any money back. It all needs to go where it belongs in our community. Um, so I'll be bringing that, but that's the first little snippet of, you know, uh, trying to help, uh, some businesses because, uh, we've done a workshop with, uh, UL and that went well. Um, I'm actually talking to them about doing another one this coming year. Um, anyway, so one step at a time with all that. But, uh, and as far as the sponsoring stuff, look, we are a community. Uh, you know, you can't be a community if you say no. We have rules and parameters. I can't do it for everybody. It's nonprofits, uh, you know, we, we can't sponsor or let people use our facilities to make money in businesses. That's not what we do. But as far as the sponsoring things, it is a joy because it just brings more involvement, more diversity, more just, you know, opportunity for our whole community. So I, 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 I think that that's always a good thing and I try to do as many as I can, as often as I can, when they meet the parameters. They don't always, but when they do, you know, why would we not do that? Um, our next meeting is March the nineteenth and, uh, looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank y'all.